We are now going to move to the regular board meeting. And to start off, may we invite Ms. Oslin Villa to deliver our invocation, please?
Heavenly Father, we lift up Cochise County into your loving hands. Bless this county, its towns, its ranches, its canyons, and its skies. From Bisbee to Wilcox, from Sierra Vista to Douglas, you may your peace dwell in every heart and home. Bless and grant wisdom and strength to its leaders and protect all who serve. Law enforcement, first responders, teachers, and caregivers. May justice, compassion, and integrity guide every decision made for the good of the people. Let unity rise from my diversity and respect be the bridge between neighbors. Grant us wisdom in our deliberations, patience in our discussions, and clarity in our decisions. May we listen with respect, speak with kindness, and act with integrity. Amen.
And thank you, Ms. Villa. Now I would invite you to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance in the name of the United States of America and to the Constitution. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every single inch of our身子. May be seated. Thank you. This is the regular board meeting for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors Tuesday, June 17th, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. Board of Supervisors Hearing Room 1450 Melody Lane, Building G, Bisbee, Arizona pursuant to A R S 38431. Point oh two A's of public or physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. Board may vote to recess into executive session for the purposes of retaining legal advice from the board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to A R S 38431 point oh three A three. Members of the public may attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or via phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714, conference ID 750944462. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 5204329200 for direction. The board may permit public comment during the discussion on any item on this agenda to speak to an agenda item or during call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board by 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published. This means that some presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. Roll call, Tom Crosby, District One is present, District Two.
Gomez is present.
And as we noted, Mr. Antonori is absent from us today. Call to the public. And was it Mr. LaChance's desire to speak at the call to the public as opposed to an agenda item? Please come up.
Morning Supervisors, my name is Daniel LaChance. I know you all know me. I know you all. I'm from Sierra Vista in District One. So before I say anything else, I want to really give a resounding thank you for helping the citizens overturn an unlawful, unconstitutional election. It's really two years of absolutely difficult litigation against a system that didn't really want to do what's right for the citizens, but somehow we got it done. And so now we have a redo of the election. And that's what I want to address here today. So I sent the letter to all three of you with five issues which we must address if we're going to get this right. Three of them are actual violations of constitutional law that we cannot let stand. And so how are we going to deal with that? There's only one really good way to do that. That's for us to have a working session where we can get all of this stuff out in the open. We can talk back and forth and we can adequately deal with them and resolve them so that the people of the county have a real belief that the election is going to be done constitutionally and lawfully. If we don't do that, we're going to have another mess and we're going to have to deal with it through other systems. So my question to you today is when can we schedule that working session? And when can we get that done? And and deal with these really significant issues that must be dealt with? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Allison Morse, Ms. Allison Morse, are you with us today? Can you hear me? I just barely heard you.
Can you hear me now? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good morning Supervisors, staff, and members of the public. And thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share my concerns today. There has been much discussion about former Cochise County Elections Director Lisa Mara, who is now Arizona State Elections Director in the Secretary of State's office. As I have said before many times, she has an impeccable professional record and is highly regarded by her colleagues. Lisa is to be commended for her courage to uphold the law and do the right thing under the most extreme pressure to do the opposite. She has been publicly accused of quote "going behind the board and lobbying members of the legislature in Congress to change statutes" end quote. Nothing could be further than the truth. These are completely false statements bordering on slander, and I respectfully request that they stop immediately. Lisa bravely upheld well-established election laws that anyone can find in the Arizona revised statutes and the elections procedure manual. When two of the board members tried to implement policy that conflicted with these laws, Lisa followed the advice of the county attorney, Secretary of State's Office, and the county's insurance program ASAP. It was actually the two supervisors who went behind her back filing a lawsuit against her personally as well as professionally in an effort to coerce her to take unlawful actions. They later withdrew the lawsuit. And it was the court that decided that sided with Lisa on both accounts, denying the expanded hand count and demanding the immediate canvassing of election results. As long as lies about Lisa Mara are repeated publicly, I will continue to stand up for the truth. I've been following Cochise County elections very closely for some time now and have substantial documentation that supports what I say. If anyone cares to dispute my statements, I would challenge them to provide factual evidence. Petty name-calling and distortions of the truth do not change reality. Though I suspect some would like us to believe they do. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next is Ms. Karina Eastman.
Nice job. Hello, members of the board. Thank you for hearing me today. I'm here about the Bisbee Bike Way project. In 2010, I was cycling around the pit. I had just returned from a deployment to Mosul, Iraq as a lieutenant in the Navy. And I was struck by a drunk driver around the pit. This significantly changed my life. I was, due to my injuries, I was no longer able to serve in the Naval Reserves. And I was unable to work. And I almost lost my home. And so a lot of things happened in a profound manner due to that accident around the pit. I also knew an individual who was killed cycling around the pit and an elderly gentleman who was also struck. So it really hits home for me as a cyclist back then, the seriousness with which the danger around the pit and what a pathway would do for our community. And in another way, because I wasn't able to work, I didn't have a vehicle and I had to walk a lot. So I wound up walking around the pit ironically. And it's just fondly dangerous. There is very little room. The sidewalks are very dangerous to walk on, especially at night. And I think that a pathway would truly change. If one life could be saved, isn't a pathway worth that? I believe it is. And I also think it would bring communities together, bringing old Bisbee and the Bakersville and Warren and other communities in Bisbee together and provide better financial business for all the areas. So really, that's all I wanted to speak about. And I hope you really consider putting that pathway in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eastman. Next up is Mr. Radford Hyde. Mr. Radford Hyde, are you with us today?
Hello. Greetings, Board of Supervisors. This is Radford Hyde from Sierra Vista. And I wanted to mention a couple of things. Dan LaChance went through a lot of effort and pain for all of the people of Cochise County. And for that, we should all be in his debt. Thank you, Dan LaChance, for your efforts to make the county follow the law. Regarding the letter he submitted to the board, which I suggest the supervisors make public, they make such good points. I fully support all of his analysis and assessments. That said, the board is obligated to the electors to address all of his written concerns in a series, not just one, but a series of working sessions, beginning as soon as possible and prior to moving forward. One caveat. Just because the county settled the lawsuit by both parties agreeing that the yes votes on the ballot measure would count as the minimum I votes for a referendum or initiative, that still does not meet the legal requirement to obtain signatures for a referendum or initiative. And I expect that if that goes forward that way, another group of citizens may be inclined to sue the county to make them do it in the legal way by gathering signatures first. So start this process by creating a new language or presentation to the voters and gather the required signatures before placing it or any other thing on a ballot. By the way, we need a bond, not a never-ending slush fund. And also, please do not ignore the staff story requirement either to require a three-fifths or sixty percent supermajority to approve this tax or any other tax. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Mr. Eli Dalton Webb, did you wish to speak at the call to the public this morning?
Lou, so I found where it is in the Constitution about pro temp judges of the Superior Court, which you guys are going to appoint. So Article Six, Section Thirty-one is, I guess, where it is in the Constitution for appointing pro temp judges. So I just wanted to say that. If it's between not having any judges for the Superior Court and then having a judge for the three days, I would support having a duty judge there. I also wanted to comment on the $10,000 spent a couple of weeks ago for the flag. Do we really need to spend $10,000 for a flag? I just, there doesn't. I didn't get a chance to see if you guys actually voted yes on that, but if you guys did vote yes on that, you guys are not physically conservative. I'm just, I'm sorry to say it, like. So the other thing is I want to address about the jail visitation. It doesn't seem to ever be a discussion when it comes up in these meetings. The, it's pretty clear that jail visitation is not a priority. There's been some talk about how attorneys are having a hard time with getting visits with jail inmates. So that's a problem. And I'd like to see that addressed. I guess that's it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. I would like to reply to Ms. Morse, and that is that Ms. Morse can easily see the open public record on October 24th, November 18th, and November 28th. The so-called catlet letter, if you do not have the so-called catlet letter, let me know and I will make sure that you get a copy of that. So, and that was dated October 28th, 2022. Ms. Mara was not required to comply with the opinion of the past county attorney in ASAP instead of Item One, which was voted in favor of October 24th, 22. And so that concludes my comments. Thank you. Next, we have.
I think that's it, right?
Excuse me?
Is that all we have?
Well, that's all the call to the public that we have. There's some that wanted to speak on agenda items. And that's going to be coming up Items Seven and Eight.
I'd like to address, Mr. Webb.
Okay.
We did not spend $10,000 on a flag. I had texted you about it. It's a foundation. It's the pole. It's to have the flags representing the Buffalo Soldiers. I forget which, there were two regiments. It's for lights. It's for the whole thing. It's to honor the American soldiers, the African-American soldiers who are here along the border. So it's not $10,000 for a flag. And I get concerned when that kind of comment is made because then that gets out that we spent $10,000 for a flag. We did not. And you can check at our last meeting, there's a whole discussion about what it was for. And the people from Camp Nakco Heritage came and thanked us and again said what it was for. So if you really want to know, just reach out to them and they'll tell you exactly all the different things that that money is going to go for. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda is a presentation by Ms. Cynthia Myers called Outreach Manager. If you would care to address this, Ms. Myers, are you here today? You're Ms. Myers. You're Dr. Clay.
I think that might be a mistake.
Ms. Dr. Clay is with us this morning.
So we're having a briefing by our students today, a presentation on anti-bullying awareness. That's what we are here for today, not Ms. Myers, which we would love to present.
Carry on, carry on, please.
Which I'm looking forward to. It can all teach us adults something, too.
Thank you, members of the board, members of the board. Ms. Cynthia, would you go ahead over there? What I'd like to let you know is that we have our students here. Our Student Advisory Council basically consists of students across Cochise County. We come and meet together once a month. What we've done, we have four purposes that we're going to talk to you about. And we're going to talk to you about what we're going to focus on for the next year, which is anti-bullying. We have not actually implemented the things that we're talking to you about today, but these are our plans. And we hope to get good feedback from you. And I guess we're ready. Ready? All right then. Here we go.
Hello, my name is Kendra Hamburg. I currently attend Wilcox High School as a freshman. Today, the Cochise County Student Advisory Council will present to you our mission and the Anti-Bullying Awareness Project. Here, we have fourteen participants from eight schools, and here are their photos.
My name is, my name is Noah Hernandez, and I will be going to Bisbee High School. When the Student Advisory Council was created, it had four main purposes. To elevate student voice to inform counties, school, and districts of student issue and concerns. Provide a structure for two-way communication between the county superintendent and students. Help students to become leaders, representatives, and ambassadors in their schools and community. And to build relationships between adults and students where all voices are equal.
Hello, I am Jason Young, and I'm going to attend Buena High School as a freshman. And the reason bullying is the issue we are talking about today is because when we all applied last year, we were asked to name three of the top issues facing students and everybody today. We figured bullying was one of the biggest ones, and we figured this is what we need to tackle now. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Inzaka Bowen. I attend Peptech High School, and I'll be a junior this year. Yay! My fellow colleagues were shared for purposes and obliging purpose number one. In order to elevate student voice to inform county, inform county, school, and districts of student issues and concerns, we will do these following items. We will have an anonymous concern box. Some people write down their names. It will be anonymous, so that no one knows who they are. We will connect with school student councils so that we could see what their problems are and how we could help them out. We will make an anti-bullying billboard so we can encourage students and parents to take action on bullying. We will connect to other schools by collaborating with other schools and emphasizing on decreasing bullying.
Hello, my name is Greta Swanson, and I'll be attending Buena High School as a freshman.
And hi, I'm Bella Chaz, and I'll also be a freshman at Buena next year, too. And for purpose two out of four, we decided to provide a structure for two-way communication between the county superintendents and students. Out of these three, out of these three courses of action, our main concern was to establish social media presence, which is creating official Facebook and Instagram accounts to reach out to schools and request that they link or promote these accounts through their platforms.
We also plan fun events with our schools and county superintendents to talk about our schools. This way, we can also recruit more members so that they can share concerns and so that we can better our schools.
Well, like I said, I am Jason Young. And for purpose three out of four, we will help students become leaders, representatives, and ambassadors in their schools, counties, and anywhere else they're involved in. We will do this by teaching kids to become leaders and build their confidence, which will help them lead, speaking to the community about what they can do to help, and talk to students around the county about how they can make it better in their school.
All we can guide students in developing leadership abilities to strengthen their self-confidence is us, the Student Advisory Council, can go visit other schools around the county. We can talk to the students about the importance of leadership and include leaders in discussions on how to address bullying at their schools.
Hello, my name is Hera Floss. I am working on Purpose Four. And the topic of Purpose Four is to build relationships between adults and students where all voices are equal. And the two ideas that we had for this, for Purpose Four is to meet at schools with student council leaders, student advisory council representatives, and teachers. And the second one we had was to encourage teachers to become more welcoming. And with both of these options, they both give the staff, the parents, and the students a chance to explain their side of what's happening. Either whether it's bullying, not paying attention, getting picked on. I'd see how we can help depending on their answers.
Good morning. My name is Abigail Bowen. I attend Peptech High School, and I will be a junior this year. Woohoo! Purpose Four, meet at schools with student council leaders, meet student advisory council representative and teachers. First, to make schools better, we must begin by understanding the unique challenges these schools faces. This means listening to students, teachers, parents, and staff to identify the specific issues affecting their community. Second, once we understand the problems, we can explore meaningful ways to help, to help, whether through resources, programs, or support systems tailored to their needs. Third, a key area of focus is fostering open and honest conversations between adults and students about bullying. Last but not least, by creating safe spaces for dialogue, we can better understand the impact bullying has on young people and work together to develop effective strategies to prevent and address it within each school.
I can do things you cannot. You could do things I cannot. Together, we could do great things by mother Teresa. Which means all of us, ladies and gentlemen, we need you guys' help. Here is a list of names of people that are on the Student Advisory Council for 2025 and 2026. Thank you. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, but a lot of these speakers that I heard are better speakers now than I am as an adult. So carry on and best wishes.
I'd just like to make a comment. I hope that you can expand this council to include everyone in all the different cities like Douglas and Elfrida, because in Cochise County, every community is very unique. And one of the ways in which we can start to understand each other is to be able to talk together, right, at your age. So people from Douglas, people from Tombstone, Bisbee, Wilcox, Spence, and all those kids have different environments that they're going under. So if you start at your age, as you get older, you have more of the empathy and the ability to see through why people are, you know, bullying or what their problems are. I really give you a lot of credit. Some kids are afraid to come up here and talk to us. You guys did an incredible job. Keep it up, and I hope that you keep coming back to us and tell us where you are and what you're doing, okay?
Hi, if I could respond to the board's comments, thank you. We're very excited that they were able to present to you today. This was their first presentation, so we started at home for our county. And in response to the getting more schools, that is a goal that all of us have. And the applications, we've kept them open. Once we started the board, we've kept them open, so any student that is between fifth, you know, going to be in the fifth to 12th grade next school year can apply.
Can you send me that application so I can send it to some people I know? That'd be great.
And the great thing about this initiative, I'm sorry, I am Cynthia Myers.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. So the great thing about this initiative and utilizing the county, the county Student Advisory Council is that we did get that money from the federal government for the BGA Stop Grant. And we have an anonymous tip reporting tool that we're going to be putting in all the schools. So we're going to utilize these great, young, aspiring individuals to help us promote and get into the schools with the AMANUS tip line, so they're going to work really well together.
Do you all plan to come before us at least like once every quarter or something to just let us know what you guys are doing?
Yeah, absolutely. We would love to do that. Thank you for your.
I know. Yeah, and that'll give them experience in talking in front of adults and get the fear because there's really no reason to be afraid of us, but, you know, it's just good practice.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
In conclusion, thank you so much for your time. The students will be going on tour. They're going to be going, talking to other council members across the county. And there will also be briefings of the State Board of Education and hopefully the governor. This is the first time that, in fact, this is something that's new in Arizona. And I'd also like to say that we have one of our students who have been selected for the State Advisory Council. So we have representation at the state level with our students. So I think that we are going to start something amazing. But what you see before you are our future leaders. They're very resilient, tenacious, and they want to change the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Clay.
The chair would hear a motion for the consent agenda items one through seven.
I move that we accept the consent.
I move that we accept the consent items one through seven.
Second.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
It's consent agenda items one through six.
Oh, okay.
Okey doke.
We'll simply make that correction here.
Do you want me to state it?
Sure, go ahead.
I motion that we approve consent items one through six.
Second. Is there discussion? Well, I have just one note of discussion, and that was when I was looking at the demands, I saw a payment for $340,000 and that was equated to 87.4 hours of flight time on the helicopter. And that comes out to an astounding, just quick estimate, $3,890 per hour, which is just, it just, to me, it screams for review. So speaking of review, I'm going to give my associate this copy of this, which is what I gave to somebody over, I gave it to Mr. Casey last week. And this, this was additional items that I believe should be reviewed. And unfortunately, I forgot to photocopy the back. So I'll, but Mr. Casey, I'm sure can provide that for you. And you already have it because I gave it to you before.
Yeah.
So there has been a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Moving to number seven. And Ms., okay, the chair would hear a motion for number seven.
I move that we approve item number seven, approve series 13 Farm Winery New Liquor License Application Submitted by Christopher Dell Brinkmeyer for Sky Haven Wines at 5405 East Patriot Trail, Wilcox, Arizona 85643.
Okay, and we do have Ms. Laura Lowenheim. Would you care to give us a presentation? And then we do have a request to speak. Ms. Lowenheim.
If you could open the public hearing.
Oh, okay. Good idea. We now open, well, I would do that before the speaker, but that's fine. Opening the public hearing for item number seven.
Vice Chairman Crosby and members of the board, this is for a new series 13 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License Application Submitted for, I'm sorry, that was not beer and wine, Farm Winery Liquor License Applied Submitted by Christopher Brinkmeyer for Sky Haven Wines Located in Wilcox, Arizona. This application's been reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. Property taxes for the parcel are current. The notice and application were posted as required by state law and no formal protests were received. The application, the applicant has paid the $100 processing fee and board staff is recommending approval.
Thank you very much. Is there other discussion from the board? Mr. Webb, did you wish to address this again?
So I look forward to more private sector businesses being opened in Cochise County. I don't know all the details, but I'm in support of this. The other thing is, this person either owns their property or they don't own their property. So I don't know why this person needs to go get a license. So I just want to say that I am in support of this. Okay. Did you have further comment, Madam Gomez?
No, I didn't.
Ms. Lowenheim, do you know why somebody needs a liquor license?
It's mandated by the state by statute.
Okay, so it's probably in a bunch of ARSs that have to do with alcohol and so on.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, there has been a motion and a second, hasn't there?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm closing the, the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Number eight. The chair would hear a motion for number eight.
I move that we approve Community Enhancement Fund, which I really wish it would be Community Needs Fund, expenditures for District Two, contribution to the Bisbee Bike Ways Project West End Segment in the amount of $20,000. I just want to say, I know we have some people, right, that, clerk, that are going to be speaking on this?
Let's have a second.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay. Do we have anybody that's slated to speak?
I believe two people, or maybe more, that want to speak, five speakers that want to speak on.
I just, I just want, why I felt this was really important is that I was coming out of Bisbee. I was actually at a dental appointment. And as I came out of that turn, I almost hit a woman that was walking from, I guess you would say Lowell or Warren, you know, right that way. It's, it's a really serious issue. Also, it would connect two communities together, hopefully also expanding the pipe, the pathway down to maybe Naco and on into Douglas. But I do think that it's a serious issue for bikers and for just people walking. I've looked at it every time I go by because I'm very concerned and I just see how dangerous it is. So I'm looking forward to what the people who are in support of this have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Number one on the list for this item for public speaking
Good morning. Good morning Supervisor Gomez, Supervisor Crosby, staff. I'm Megan Connolly. I was born in Bisbee 45 years ago. I've lived here on and off. I am the Executive Director of Bisbee Bike Ways. I'm here in strong support of this, this item, which proposes $20,000 contribution from the District Two Community Enhancement Fund. And I agree it is a need for the west segment of the Lavender Pit Shared Use Path. This project is life-saving. Between mileposts 341 and 342.6 on the state Route 80, we've, we've seen at least four fatalities and numerous injuries since 2000, including the 2021 hit-and-run death of local cyclist Sergio Lali. Other injuries include Corey's, who spoke. A lot of them haven't been reported. One that I heard from someone who it wasn't really reported, he was hit on his bike and was in a coma for three days. The west segment that this money would go towards connects directly to the east segment where most of these crashes have occurred. The west segment is the gateway to the Lavender Pit Path. It links Main Street and Bisbee's attractions to the Queen Mine Tour and the east segment toward Lowell, forming the spine of what we are envisioning as a 27-mile shared use path network that will ultimately connect to Camp Naco. It creates the first safe ADA compliant route between Old Bisbee and Lowell, two major tourist attractions. It also is the first leg of the Sun Corridor Trail in Cochise County, a multi-use trail envisioned to run from Las Vegas, Nevada to Douglas, Arizona for biking, walking and horseback riding. Bisbee's investment positions the county as a destination for trail-based tourism. So we must, this has been prioritized in both Lavender Pit feasibility study and the Bisbier Mobility Master Plan. The network is a partnership between the City of Bisbee, Bisbee Bike Ways and Cochise County. We have raised $34,000 towards our match commitment for the design. And we've also raised $20,000 from the City of Bisbee, 4,000, I'm trying to speak fast, 4,000 from Bisbee Foundation, 30,000 from Bisbee Bike Ways, and the remaining gap is 153,000. This 20,000 will bring it down to 133,000, very doable with foundation support. Beyond the safety, this is a major economic investment. Retail sales rise 30 to 49% near bike-ped infrastructure. Property values rise by up to 15%. $1 million in bike-ped infrastructure creates nine to 14 local jobs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Carolyn Harris, and Karen Schumacher is on deck.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Carolyn Harris, 404C Mason Hill Avenue, Bisbee. I am the Secretary of Bisbee Bike Ways. I'm here to encourage approval of 20,000 toward the multi-use path on Highway 80 around the Lavender Pit. How will it, how will it enhance our community? Improved safety is the number one enhancement. Have you ever noticed the white bike memorials on either side of the Mule Pass Tunnel? My late husband, he sent their grill, was run over and killed by a motorist five years ago this coming Sunday. As his widow, I understand the need for safety on our streets. Believe me, the multi-use path around the pit will save lives and enhance our community. And finally, I just want to say thank you to Supervisor Gomez for sponsoring the allocation. Thank you all.
Thank you. Karen Schumacher. Is Ms. Schumacher with us this morning?
She is, she is online. She just need to unmute herself.
We'll give her a half a minute. And, and then if she, if she still is with us by the end of our, our other public speakers and she can come back. That's our half a minute, whether it is or not. Next is Jeremy Frick.
Hi there. Thank you very much to the supervisors and to the general public. I'm Jeremy Fricki from Bisbee. I live in the San Jose District of Bisbee. And I currently serve as Executive Director of Naco Heritage Alliance, which stewards Camp Naco in Naco, Arizona. I support the approval of the Community Enhancement Fund expenditures, including the 20,000 contribution for the Bisbee Bike Ways. As Executive Director of the Naco Heritage Alliance, I see firsthand how these paths, like those envisioned by Bisbee Bike Ways, can connect these communities, improve quality of life, and deepen engagement with historic and cultural sites such as Camp Naco. This aligns with our mission to uplift the histories, arts and cultures of Borderlands by creating spaces that serve both residents and visitors. The community in Cochise County broadly loves the space that we're in. This shared use path has the potential to support not only the immediate community, but significantly increases accessible tourism in the area. If anyone in the area knows, there's a huge parking problem. And there's already a significant amount of events for bikers, runners, hikers in the broader area. And this kind of investment brings not only speed and accessibility, but also safety for those who would normally have to use, you know, these busier roads. I'm especially excited for when this pathway can reach Naco itself, Camp Naco especially. But the project suggested in this particular step is, is very necessary, not only for now, but also for setting up infrastructure for the future. I, I'm excited that this investment will enhance the connectivity between communities in Cochise County, especially through regional collaboration. I definitely strongly urge your support for this project.
And thank you, sir. Well, let's try Karen Schumacher again. And I am advised that she needs to unmute herself. Yeah, we'll give her one more chance after David Lloyd. Is Mr. Lloyd with us today? There he is. Care to address this?
I'm David Lloyd from 3606 Wilson Road, Wilson Place. And was approving of this. I want to say I am not representing anybody directly, but I have been active in my community for over 10 years, always listening to everybody. Recently joining the board for the Naco Heritage Alliance. Because among their mandates to honor the Buffalo Soldier legacy and to advance Borderland culture is also community service. And, and so I tried to work with other people, including Jeremy that you heard, but for instance, Jesus Ariete from the community in what that means and how do we establish it. The bike path is very clearly something that we can do for the community by working in cooperation with the board. And that would be for health benefits for our community. It would be for larger benefits, including just interest in the community and getting out in the community, connectivity in the community. So although this is today, looking at the pit, the extension, as Jeremy and others have touched on, is directly applicable to what I see as our duty as a community in Naco. I'm here only for questions, so I wanted to just say I could maybe answer. Any questions?
No, sir.
No.
Excellent. Thank you for your involvement. Mr. Lloyd, one more time for Karen Schumacher, who I.
I am here. Can you hear me?
All right, there you are.
Thank you so much. Good morning. Thank you supervisors and staff. My name is Karen Schumacher and I am a Ward One Council Member for the City of Bisbee. Ward One, as you may know, includes the neighborhoods of Old Bisbee, Saginaw, Lowell, and part of Galena. And those are some of the areas that will be heavily impacted by the Bike Ways Project. I'm here to ask for your support of a Community Enhancement Fund contribution in the amount of $20,000 for this project. At the May 20th, 2025 Bisbee Council Meeting, the council approved a letter of assurance from the City of Bisbee and a $20,000 contribution for the Bike Ways West End Segment of the multipath. So this request to you is in alignment with the city's goals. It's important to note that I've also received an incredible amount of feedback from our citizens in support of this project. On top of the recreational and tourism-related advantages this path will create, this project will also make the area much safer for the pedestrians and cyclists already trying to navigate around the Lavender Pit every day. At this time, the area is hazardous for these activities and we look forward to your support in making this a safe area for Bisbee citizens, the citizens of Cochise County, and the many, many tourists that come into our community. The Bike Ways is a momentous project for our town and Cochise County, spearheaded by a hard-working director, Megan Connolly, and the Bike Ways Board, working on behalf of the City of Bisbee. I'm really excited to see this project come to fruition and I appreciate your consideration of this financial support. Thank you guys and thank you for your patience.
Thank you. I haven't heard any, any comments against the project, Madam Gomez.
I know.
So there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The chair.
I know you're not supposed to.
That's okay. Chair would hear a motion for item number nine.
Okay. I move that we approve item nine, approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditures for District Two, sponsor Douglas Boys and Girls Club in the amount of $10,000.
Sir.
Okay, so I'd like to make a comment on what this is about. About in 2008, when I came back from New York, we tried to establish a Boys and Girls Club. We had a hard time coming up with, then it was $150,000 to have as a bottom baseline that you would have to have in the, in the bank to be able to establish a Girls and Boys Club. So we've tried and tried and tried. And finally now, the City of Sierra Vista is going to sponsor the Boys and Girls Club. We have a commitment, I believe, of about $150,000. This money would go into that contingency fund that they need to make sure that they can establish it so that it eventually can go from Sierra Vista to Douglas. The mayor has worked really hard in trying, in securing a building to have the Boys and Girls Club. And, you know, the town of 16,000, we have kids that just don't have anywhere to go. This would be such a big plus to the community. And, you know, Bisbee has one and everyone knows that it's been very successful. Sierra Vista has one. It's been very successful. Now Douglas, the second-largest city in Cochise County, desperately needs one for its youth. So I hope that the board will join me in approving this, this amount for $10,000 to support the Boys and Girls Club in Douglas.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. May we hear a motion for item number 10, please?
Okay. I move that we approve office lease agreement between Cochise County and Arizona Border Regents on behalf of the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension for the use of a single office space at the Cochise County Service Center in Douglas at $0 lease effective July 1st, 2025. at $0 lease effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Second, and I believe we have a, a presentation from Mr. Bert Whitehead the fourth.
This is very simple. This is actually mandated by Arizona statute that each county must provide an office, a space for this Arizona, University of Arizona Extension Office. So this is just our way of complying with that statute. There is an office, I believe, in Douglas that has been selected for that. It's a small office, I think 150 square feet or so, includes a desk, a phone. They would bring their own computer and so on, and then it has some obviously indemnity clauses and so on. So we're just trying to comply with that law. It's no cost, but also no, uh, lease amount that we would receive for it, but that is also per statute. So we're asking you to approve that.
I'd like to expand on it too. Um, in the county building in Douglas, they have a very small office, but they're doing food sustainability workshops. They are doing, uh, cooking classes for, you know, to teach people how to cook for their children. I'm encouraging them to do it for adults who are trying to cook for their elderly. And so with such a tiny space, we just had this space sitting there, nobody using it. So I suggested that they ask for that extra space because that way they can expand a little bit, at least have an office for them to be using for, you know, administrative reasons, and then the one down in the main lobby for their supplies. And I think it's important, we have this commu-, you know, the Cochise, uh, building, county building there, and we need to be able to use all the space and not just let it, let it stand there, be empty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for your presentation, Mr. Whitehead. There's been a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Uh, may we have a motion or for item number 11?
I move that we approve grant agreement HT dash two, five, dash, two, nine, zero, nine, City of Tucson High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, HIDTA, between the City of Tucson and Cochise County in the amount of $150,353 effective January 1, 2025 through December 31st, 2026.
Second. Yes, sir.
I'm with the Cochise County Attorney's Office, Kenny Reeves, and I just wanted to, uh, thank you for hearing us today. Uh, and as you know, we've had this grant for 20-plus years. I think this will be our 23rd year uninterrupted with this grant. And it pays for, pays for 72% of one senior prosecutor in the drug unit and 84% of one legal secretary who's now a paralegal in the Attorney's Office as well. And there is no county match for this, uh, grant. It's basically supported by, um, indirect costs as a match, so. And that's about it. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does it include, uh, benefits for these employees?
It does, yes. As a matter of fact, the, uh, way that it's broken down is 123,163 for salaries and then benefits are 27,190.
Okay, and that's for two employees?
Yes, it is.
I see. Okay. Are there further discussion points? Okay. We've had a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Moving on to item number 12. May we have a motion, please?
I move that we approve grant agreement HT dash two, five, two, nine, one, two with the City of Tucson Southwest Border Arizona Region High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, HIDTA program, and the Cochise County Sheriff's Office to participate in the Southern Arizona Major Investigative Team for salaries, partial employee-related expenses, services, and supplies in the amount of $100,601.6 effective January 2025 through December 31st, 2026.
Second, and it looks like we might have a presentation from Captain Jurd. Would you care to address this this morning, sir?
Good morning, members of the board, Captain Jurd, Sheriff's Office. Uh, this grant, like, uh, Mr. Reeves just said, is, we've been running for a long time. It goes for, uh, the overtime expenses related in lengthy narcotics investigations through our narcotics team. And it's, uh, specific to the narcotics investigations. It does pay for EREs and partial EREs, and the rest of it is, uh, just making sure I'm not getting them confused. Sorry. I believe this is the one that pays for the partial EREs and the rest of the funds, uh, come out of uh, another source of funding that's on the FY26 budget, uh, presentation.
Okay. There's been a motion in a second. Do you have any further questions?
No.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. May we have a motion for item number 13, please?
I move, I move to approve grant agreement DC dash two, six, dash, zero, zero, three between Arizona Criminal Justice Commission, ACJC, Drug, Gang, and Violent Crime Control, and the Cochise County Sheriff's Office to fund the Special Operations Division overtime and employee-related expenses, EREs, related to its narcotics and smuggling investigations in the amount of $140,684.63 effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Second. Are there any questions?
No.
Mr. Mr. Jurd, what is the, uh, what is the connection to smuggling investigations with this grant?
So again, this is, uh, through narcotics investigations, and I may have got them flip-flopped. I apologize. But, uh, this one is, uh, the, for a DEA Task Force agent, uh, from, it's a sheriff's employee that works with the DEA, and again, it's for salaries and EREs.
Okay. Uh, so when you, when it's, it does say smuggling, so I'm wondering, smuggling from where to where?
From the international border.
Okay. That's what I thought. So I just wanted to confirm that it is a border-related grant. Oh, thank you very much. Uh, there has been a motion in a second. Any further questions?
No.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Jurd.
Thank you.
May we have a motion for item number 14?
I move to approve the proclamation declaring June 2025 as Family Reunification Month in Cochise County.
Second. Do we have Ms. Abigail Dodge?
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Abby Dodge. I am with Court Administration. And, um, I just wanted to let you know that as of today, we have just over 200 children from Cochise County that are involved in our dependency system, meaning that their families have reached a level of involvement with child welfare that has gone to court oversight. So in the year of 2024, of the cases that closed during that timeframe, approximately 50% of these families did successfully reunify thanks to the work of an incredible team of individuals that, that come together to help these families through the system. So as a way of, um, excuse me, as a way of recognizing the incredible amount of work that these providers, our community, and especially these parents and their children have put forth to successfully reunify, we are asking the board to sign this proclamation declaring June 2025 as Family Reunification Month in Cochise County. Um, so this proclamation states, whereas Cochise County recognizes all children need the love, care, security, and stability of a family unit that includes parents, siblings, grandparents, and extended family members. And whereas keeping families together is an important goal for our communities and is the best option for a safe, permanent home for children in foster care whenever possible and without sacrificing child safety. And whereas reunification takes work, commitment, and investment of time and resources by parents, family members, social workers, foster parents, service providers, attorneys, courts, educators, and the community. And whereas of dependency cases that closed in 2024, approximately 49% of dependent children from Cochise County were reunified with their family. And whereas Family Reunification Month acknowledges and honors the hard work of families who have overcome an array of challenges to reunify safely and successfully, and the communities that came together to support these families and raise awareness about the importance of family reunification and supporting reunified families. Now, do I continue?
Oh, you can do whatever you want, uh, as you wish. Carry on. I would say I'm very happy about any family unification. Uh, would you care to, uh, acknowledge others in the system that help you?
Well, I would like to acknowledge the, the judicial, the bench, the court system. They help guide the families. Our child welfare system, the Department of Child Safety, they do incredible work with our families. We have a team of court-appointed special advocate volunteers that work with families in the system. Uh, we have behavioral health providers throughout the county that help guide families and help them learn skills. And then our foster families, our kinship, especially those family members, those people that know the children that are able to help them avoid going to a stranger's home during the life of this case. But also our licensed foster families who have taken it upon themselves to help families and to help children and, and help these cases move back towards reunification.
That does sound very huge. Ms. Gomez?
No, I, I think it's amazing. So you've reunited 200 families, you said?
Uh, no, I said as of today, we have just over 200 children that are still involved in the system. But during 2024, fif-, almost 50% of our families, of our cases that closed were a result of family reunification.
That is really huge, and that's got to be so important to those children. So great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, do we have a motion in a second? Okay. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And may we have a motion for item number 15, please?
I move to approve the third amended intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between Cochise County and the City of Sierra Vista for Regional 9/11 Communications and Establishment of Southeast Arizona Communication Center effective July 1st, 2025.
Second. Ms. Wilkins, would you care to address this this morning? Or maybe it's Sharon. Okay.
Thank you, Supervisor Cosby, Supervisor Gomez. Uh, before you today is the third amended intergovernmental agreement between Cochise County and Sierra Vista, City of Sierra Vista for CCOM, our Southeast Arizona Communications 911 Dispatch Center. We determined a need for this third amended IGA based on, um, several changes that are required for efficient operations of CCOM. One being that all personnel and human resources functions are going to be transferred to the county, have been transferred to the county, and this, um, incorporates that agreement from previous year. Um, it also allows for participat-, participation of the sheriff as an ex-officio member of CCOM. Uh, I am on the board of CCOM and represent the county and Board of Supervisors there. The sheriff represents county law enforcement and has, as an ex-officio, only has voting when there's a tie. The third amended IGA also transfers fiscal duties to this, from the city to the county. Um, our staff has been working with the city's finance staff over the past six months to ensure that smooth transition can occur on July 1st. Uh, there are still, um, as you probably recall, in December, there were employees who elected to stay with the city, and some employees became county employees. So it's about 11 city employees and about 13 or so county employees right now at CCOM. Any new positions will become county employee positions. And, um, under this IGA, city employees report to the city through their, uh, structure of benefits and county employees are county employees through structure of benefits. So they're all under one umbrella. They all work together, but there's no, um, loaned employees as previously stated.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we've had a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. And the motion passes. Ms. Gilman, would you have further comments about, uh, recent impending county matters? And you could even include in that, if you want to, legislative matters, uh, as per 16, if you want to. Just whatever you want to tell us.
Or I can roll everything into one.
Okay, roll everything into one. Go for it.
So, um, this past weekend, past Thursday and Friday, I attended meetings with the County Managers Association in Prescott, and something that came out with a long presentation regarding the budget, the state budget, and lack of thereof currently. Um, the House has prepared their budget. Senate and Governor Hobbs have, um, collaborated on a budget. And now the two need to come to some kind of unification. Uh, right now, we are not seeing too many negative county touchpoints, some positive county touchpoints, but until it's all finalized, we don't know for sure. Uh, we also talked a great deal about, um, future, the future of corp and, um, changes to that system that could, perhaps improve the recruitment from a standpoint of the Sheriff's Association, um, and also keeping an eye on our fiscal responsibilities related to corp. So that will be an ongoing discussion as we prepare for the next legislative session. And in upcoming events, we have, uh, June 18th, early voting begins for the seventh congressional district special primary election. Registration, voter registration has, uh, closed. That closed yesterday at midnight. So early voting begins tomorrow. And, um, that means that people can come to the early voting locations in, uh, Bisbee here at the Recorder's Office and in Douglas to, um, from eight, on Saturdays, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on June 21 and 28th to vote. Um, sample map ballots will be mailed July 3rd, and, uh, the last day for, for voting early is July 11th, election day being July, July 15th. And we will have a vote center here in the hearing room for that as well.
And that's for the primary, right?
It's for the primary. I mentioned some upcoming meetings earlier. You asked.
Sure, let's.
So on Friday, July 20th, that's this Friday at 10:00 AM, we will be having a meeting with Stifel, the bond financing company, regarding jail bond financing and what that outlook will be for any tax revenue that we would commit to the financing of that bond. So they will lay out for us the schedule of that debt service and how long or quick the county could anticipate paying off a 100 to $120 million bond. And then we will also be discussing with them ballot language for the jail district excise tax. It's important that that ballot language meets the needs of any bond financing, uh, requirements as well as statutory requirements within, of what that ballot language should have. So their attorneys and our county attorney will be meeting with the board, excuse me, to discuss both those topics. Then we have a meeting on July 1st for site selection of the jail. So that's an opportunity for the board to have a robust discussion about the top sites that our consultant chin planning, uh, that's jail planning study produced. Um, it's my understanding, we've pretty much, from that study, narrowed it down to three possible locations, two or three possible locations. But that'll be presented to the board in full for the board to debate and then ultimately bring to an agenda item for approval. So again, those dates, the site selection work session is July 1st, I believe at 10:00 AM. Don't quote me. We'll be posting that. Things can change. It's at 2:00. Things can change between now and July 1st, but it will be posted. And then, um, the Stifel bond financing and ballot language is this Friday, July 20th at 10:00 AM. And it is posted.
Isn't this June still?
June, June. I keep doing, I either say January, June, or July.
Okay, so it's gonna be June 20th.
June 20th.
Is, uh, is the, uh, meeting with Stifel, are you, are you done?
Yes, June 20th, this Friday.
So I mentioned earlier, it'll, I'll just take my time now, and, and, uh, I, I did mention earlier, ballot language must contain future revenue demands of the jail. That's in statute. The courts have only ruled on the 10,000 to 11,000 disenfranchised issue. They didn't ra-, they didn't rule on the 60%. They didn't rule on all of the, uh, due process issues that I pointed out throughout the whole process. And today is the first time that I've heard the figure 100 to 120 million from- from our esteemed county administrator, because the Chin group was saying a hundred and ninety, something or other million, a hundred, and, and that, that neighborhood. So, uh, so now we know it's a hundred and, to a hundred and twenty million, or that's what, that's what we're thinking anyway.
That's my ballpark figure. It's the board's open division.
Okay. Uh, let's see. I guess that, uh, that concludes my comments. Madam Gomez.
None today. That's it for me.
We are going to prepare to adjourn. The next meeting will be at one PM in the executive cons-, conference room for a special possible executive session to approve an intergovernmental agreement between Cochise County Superior Court and Human Resources. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.